Mr. Dryer, are we good? It is six thirty. If everybody would join and stand with the Pledge of Allegiance and Troops Ninety, Plains City Boy Scouts will be presenting the colors.
Troops in audience please rise and hands off. Color guard advance. Color guard post their colors. Scout salute. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two.
Let's give these young men around the corner. Last week, you may be seated. Last week was National Boy Scout Week and I was helping to judge the Cub Scout Path Ninety Pinewood Derby and wanted to honor them for the week and figured this would be the closest meeting to have them come and participate. And of course, they always are so willing and able to come to our meetings and participate. We greatly appreciate it, you and the fine quality that you are instilling in our youth in our community. So, thank you again. Mr. Dryer, would you call the roll?
Absolutely. Mayor Carney.
Here.
Mr. Sins.
Here.
Mr. Terry.
Here.
Ms. E. Daley.
Here.
Ms. Ferguson.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the council meeting agenda for February thirteenth?
Motion to approve council agenda?
Second.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. E. Daley.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Robert.
Yes.
And is there a motion to approve the council work session meeting minutes from February first?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. E. Daley.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Robert.
Yes.
This evening, if I could have Dr. Todd Hooley come forward, I will meet you over here by the side of the room. It is Career Technical Education Month and Mr. Stanford helped to organize this evening's proclamation. Whereas February twenty twenty-three has been designated National Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education. And whereas profound economic and technological changes in our society are reflected in the structure and nature of work, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system. And whereas Toll's Career and Technical Center services seven school districts in central Ohio. And whereas Toll's Career and Technical Center serves over eight hundred students from its Plain City campus and an additional eight hundred students from satellite locations. Whereas twenty career technical programs are available to students on the Plain City campus and twenty additional programs through various satellite locations. And whereas Toll's Career and Technical Center provides students with a school-to-career connection and is the backbone of a strong, well-educated workforce which fosters productivity in business and industry and provides a positive contribution to the area's economic stability. And whereas the program being provided through the Toll Career and Technical Center offers students lifelong opportunities to learn relevant skills which provide career choices and personal satisfaction. And whereas Toll's students are provided practical experience and meaningful applications and real-world work experiences, allowing them the opportunity to explore and prepare for technical careers, thus improving the quality of their education, motivating average populations and providing student leadership opportunities in their communities. And whereas Toll's educators staff and leadership work collaboratively with local businesses to stimulate the economic growth and vitality of our economy, preparing graduates for career fields experiencing rapid growth. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jody Carney, Mayor of Plain City, do hereby urge all citizens and businesses to become familiar with the services and benefits offered by Toll's Career and Technical Center and proclaim that February twenty twenty-three is Career and Technical Education Month in the Village of Plain City. Thank you so much for the services you provide for our youth and students in the counties around Madison County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, yes.
Mayor Carney, President, and members of council. First off, thank you for this resolution. Thank you for just recognizing the wonderful work that happens just a couple miles up the road here. This covered a lot. I wanted just a couple things to make sure you have on your radar screen. First off, in here, it said eight hundred. Last year, we served six hundred students on campus. This year, we have eight hundred. Right now, our goal for the fall is over a thousand. We're seeing a mass increase of students from all seven of our school districts, having this really stronger interest to pursue career technical education, which probably a lot of reasons for that. The ever increasing cost of college. I think COVID caused a lot of people to step back and reassess. Frankly, the workforce needs across really our region are allowing students to go right from tolls into gainfully employment. Couple other pieces I'll share, we have an adult education program. Our FIRE program may be the one that you are most recognized. We have great partnership in the FIRE area here. We were just able to get some state capital dollars to expand upon that program. But we also, with the local manufacturing community, we've got a lot of industrial maintenance, adult welding. In the past, these may have been a little bit more the hobby, adult education. Now adults are coming to us, going through programs and be gainfully employed, and especially people who are looking to upskill or reskill. But back on the students, our programs just continue. We have a wonderful program with Jonathan Alder Schools. Because of that close proximity, it's a mile and a half down the road, students can come to Toll's just for a half day. They can start their day at Toll's, be back at JA for lunch with their friends, be in the band, on the athletic teams. That ability to maintain closeness in your home high school and come and get career technical education, that is a real win-win for Jonathan Alder Schools. And so, as they continue to grow, we look to them to be a continually strong partner in our world. So again, Mayor Carney, President, and members of council, thank you for recognizing the great work that happens at Toll's. Our doors are always open. Our restaurant, most importantly, usually opens Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Ask you to come out and enjoy the efforts of our students in the culinary program. But just again, thank you for recognizing what is often forgotten about in public K-12 education and that is career tech. So, thank you again. Appreciate it.
Just a brief question. Could you estimate the percent of adult education versus high school age?
Yeah, so adult education, we probably, right now, we just started an SDNA program. I would say we probably have, and they're not year-long, I mean, our welding program is thirty-six hours, so it's kind of a come-in-and-going program. We probably have, right now, about a hundred fifty adults in our various programs. We've got a wonderful program with Worthington Industries, that Fridays, every Friday during the day for the next year, they're bringing current employees to us for specialized training. But in the, as this resolution, we have eight hundred students on main campus, next year, a thousand, eight hundred plus in satellites, and about a hundred fifty in the adult education.
Right, thank you. I just asked a question because when I had my tour out there, I think last year, I was impressed with the quality, honestly, of the adult education program. But I came away with the feeling that was, and no fault of Toll's, that it was way more capacity there than was being utilized. And so, you know, if I were you, I would ask council to see what they can do to promote adult education, you know, as employment opportunities for adults here in the community. I think it's a wonderful opportunity. So, thank you.
It is, and you recognize exactly what we feel, there's a lot of capacity for growth. I mean, again, that building holds a thousand students and on any given night, we may have fifty to a hundred in our adult education programs. Again, our FIRE EMT is our strongest, industrial maintenance, welding, but we're moving into, again, that healthcare piece. And there's, again, the welding in the past has been hobbyists, now it's jobs. And again, we're always looking to expand programming, both for students. So if you have some ideas on future programming for adult education, we've been talking with another municipality just about a public service program, more at the student level for students to understand, you know, that great effort and thank you for your service tonight here as well. Other questions I could answer tonight? I know I'm at the beginning of your agenda, so I'm going to say thank you. I'm going to be short, be brief, be seated, and actually be gone. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Hooley. Following up with our visitors, our first visitor who signed in is Mr. Kenneth Stoller. If you'd like to come to the podium.
Mayor, council president, council members, appreciate it. A regular guy in the village, twenty-nine-plus years resident now. Before I start, I'd like to say thank you, police chief, your officers, and fire chief, your firefighters and paramedics. You guys serve every day. I'm a veteran. I served three years, one month, but I came in at the Vietnam War, so I never got deployed. But I have a lot of ancestors from World War II, so I appreciate you being on technical duty. Before I get to my item, I want to say that qualified my driving experience. I've passed fifty years now and I don't say I'm an expert. I've got my couple speeding tickets, I had accidents, so that does make me perfect, a professional one. So what I'd like to discuss is our speed limits from the clock tower, Main Street, Chalk Valley, all the way down to our now famous roundabout. The building, I think, Plain City would ever get around about, hey, we got one in that lot. Rumor is, Marysville might get there in the near future, so I'd be there. So, first of all, I have to say, in your mind, think you're leaving clock tower, heading Eastbound, and the first sign you see is twenty-five by a Gabe's Barbershop. A lot of people know Gabe. If you ever want to find out what's happening in the village, go talk to Gabe, get a haircut. That's how I didn't even want to know. Go a little farther down by the church, get thirty-five, couple signs. And what I really probably want to talk about is from Kendrick Park. I think it's Sharpton Boulevard and all the way to the roundabout. So, before the roundabout, we've got the nice fifty there, and of course, we could start speeding up a little bit. We hit the State Route fifty-five. Of course, we all know where to go with fifty-five, right? Of course we don't sometimes. But that's not the problem eastbound. The problem is westbound. So, we come past the farmer there with his cows and his trucks. We come around the roundabout, I know about you, but if you try to go around those, about thirty-five, you're pulling some good cheese there, you know, like that. I'm usually down about fifteen to twenty myself personally. So we come around ninety degrees, now we got Pleasant Valley, Cool Hard there. Of course, we already did five years ago, they were talking about Darby Station, and now we're seeing houses built there. When we come around under ninety degrees, boom, we hit fifty. Now, when we hit fifty, we're at that roundabout, we probably have to go about forty-five. And I wondered, you know, I hit my tripwire hard. I say, is that a tenth of a mile? I say, no. But I had to look it up, if anybody knows how much feet is one tenth of a mile, it's five hundred and thirty feet. So, I say, okay, so we get this sign, and I'm sure there's people that are going to hit fifty right there. We go a little more farther, here we got this Darby Station, Cool Hard now. And go a little farther, we get the courses I can see all around the country, so it's supposed to be about thirty-five. Now, we all know, we're starting to get out, since there's going to be families living here, with small children. And I heard that there's going to be a park someday, maybe schools in that area. They're going to happen anyways, so those people, families, they're going to want to come into the village. They might want to attend parades, they might want to attend Rock Rock Run, block different activities. So they're going to be walking along there, and there's no sidewalk, there's no anything there right now. So if we let people come into the village, and I guarantee there's going to be some people, they've been as police officers, they're sitting out there now, they're getting up to fifty, and they've got people walking along there, there's going to be some trouble. So, my driving ability is, I get to the bridge right in Forty Creek, I used to slow down about forty or something. I shouldn't say a police officer, but I'm thirty-seven, I'm thirty-five, so anyhow, we all know that, I moved here in two thousand and three, and to go get something to eat, I had to go to somewhere over there. Now look what's going on there, we got Costco, restaurants, we've got perimeter now, all those things now. So it took me and my wife and me, at six, eight at night, we decide, do I want to get something to eat? And it just happened, the past Tuesday, I was coming back from Chipotle in perimeter, and I had somebody behind me, and when I see somebody with the nice fancy bright lights, I say, oh my gosh, there's somebody that could be on my bumper, and sure enough, on the word Iskadoville, whatever, it was right on me, into the village, and they actually came, when I slowed down at my thirty-seven, thirty-five, they actually were on my bumper, and they had the nerve, and I made a left on the bumper, Main Street, on Chalk Valley, Gay Street, they had the nerve to swerve behind me and blow their horn and go right on the street at that. So I'm just saying, we've got some children, very near future, come into our village. You've got to consider, you ain't getting that fifty, or putting thirty-five or slower there. So that's my item.
Thank you, Mr. Stoller, and I've had that happen to me coming into town. And I know, Ms. Lupton, that was one of our main concerns when the roundabout opened, and I believe we-
Yeah, we discussed that, well, the fact that that stretched from roundabout on into town should be thirty-five.
And ODOTs.
I can't do that roundabout at, I think, twenty-eight, twenty-nine is about as far as I can take it without breaking the back end, losing going around it, so.
Year.
What's wrong with that one?
These guys are speeding around.
I wonder the speed limit.
But ODOT, we met with ODOT a month ago, we did bring that up, and we need to follow back up with them to get that sign removed because it doesn't make sense.
Would that be a state, that's a state route, that's a real hard call.
It has.
Yeah, you'll have to go, you'll have to go with ODOT to get that changed.
I can tell you that our speeding citations have, like, dropped tremendously out there because of the roundabout, because it's actually slowing the people down now before they get to that curve. That's where we used to get, maybe, the major speeding ticket basically came from out there. Most of our speeding tickets came from out there. That roundabout has actually slowed people down now coming into town, and probably went out of town also. So it has slowed people down, and I agree with you, from that point on, actually getting out of there, you know, it's fifty, then you slam on the brakes again to thirty-five. So one of these days, it would be nice if it was thirty-five all the way through there.
I remember my driving is, I guess I got really excited when somebody would come behind me. Maybe they pulled a solid drag, you know, when you learn how to drag and test and all that, but it used to be, does one car length for ten miles per hour. A lot of people don't follow that rule anymore.
They don't follow any driving laws anymore, unfortunately.
I don't get it straight anymore, but if you get frightened, it's, you're ever been down seventy-seven past Charlotte, Charleston, West Virginia, it's very runny state, and then get the big open and all that, and you see, look in your rearview mirror and see the end of the eighteen wheeler cap, you're being there.
Yes.
That's, that's a true old sight, they're around the throes. So I appreciate that. One thing I would like to add to the comment, I was going to say this company here, and the companies that I go up and down Maple a lot, on the Main Street, and I know that someone magically fixed that pole that leaning on it does it straight up now.
Actually, the boarder just fixed it this weekend.
Okay.
That was his telephone pole, basically, so on the highways, they come out and fix it. They said it wasn't theirs, so apart, Mr. Nguyen actually fixed that on his own over the weekend. He actually got permission to close the street, and he fixed it, so it's-
Well, it's what actually happened, we never know where that eventually, oh, it gets, it's just, the street side's open.
We appreciate you coming and addressing council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Paley, please.
Hello, thank you for getting me. There is, I'm a fairly new resident here, very new, I've only been here six months, and even new to Coopus. I'm from the northeast Ohio area, and I now live in Darby Fields. And the reason I'm here is, I would like to get information, details as to what happened with the sewage checkup that happened in Rock Cliff about a month ago, just what happened, what the failure was, and what is being done to, like, in corrective action.
Yeah, I can answer that. I'm newly Lupton Village Administrator. I believe, may have spoken to Ryan Huff, our Public Works Supervisor. We're not exactly sure why that day glitched out, it may have been a power failure, or we're not exactly sure why that pump stopped working. But as soon as we were notified, he went out there, it got reset and started working again. We worked with all, I think four houses were affected. Worked with all the homeowners, everybody was super gracious during that process. It normally calls Ryan when it fails. For whatever reason, it didn't call that day. We've now set it up where it has to call three people, three separate people, every day, good or bad. So if they miss a call, they know now to go check on it. So, that is, again, I'm not sure exactly what happened, but that's our fail safe of three different people know to expect a call, and if it doesn't come, they need to go check on it.
Okay, so it, so the calling system didn't, it was an electrical, okay?
Yeah, he has a log, and it's, every day it sends him like a smiley face or a, you know, come check on me type of alert, and that day it just didn't send anything for some reason.
Okay, so it's just set to call three different people instead of one?
Yes, but good or bad. So normally, it would just call them when something was wrong. Now it should call every day, and if they don't get a call, they know to check on it.
So the call-out system didn't actually fail? Because my question is, like, if it fails again, then what if it doesn't, like, call anyone?
Well, now they know, it should call every day, no matter what. So if it doesn't call, they know to go check on it.
Okay.
It was just calling when things went bad. So you don't know the daily, the day-to-day unless you go physically out there, so.
Okay, so it's checked every day?
Mm-hmm.
And then the other question I have is, in Madison County, there isn't, it's not code to have a backflow in the sewage, is that building code? Is my understanding, in Union County it is, so all the MI homes do not, obviously builders are going to build homes as cheap as possible, so there isn't backflow prevention?
Council actually implemented a backflow program last year. It was recommended to us by the EPA, so we now have it on our ordinances, we have a software program that we work with, so that going forward will be implemented.
Okay, but anything previous to last year's?
Sure, yeah, homeowners, yes.
Okay.
If you have something like a sprinkler system, or, you know, something that normally requires a backflow preventer.
Do you mean a water backflow or sewage backflow?
A sewage back.
Okay.
Oh.
I don't know if that's-
I've never heard of it.
Yeah.
Because I think that's county, isn't that a county?
I'm going to have to check on that.
I've only heard of water backflow, I've never heard of a sewer backflow preventer. Have you?
No, I haven't heard of it.
Yeah, I think I have your information, or I'll get it from Ryan. I'd be happy to check on that and let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Syper?
Hello, Chrissy Syper, if you want to meet. I'm here actually, of all things, for the tree commission, which I didn't think would bring me here, but I was interested in the proposed changes. My concern is actually with the stricken language in the authority section. Right now, the ordinance means all projects of the commission and any expenditure of public money by it basically shall be approved in advance by council. I'm curious why this is being stricken. The ordinance was approved twenty years ago, which is now coming up, the changes, and you're looking after this.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yes, because Mr. Kent has been working on the tree commission, so.
Yeah, so our thought process behind that basically is, the tree commission would be worked into a budget, which council will then approve, so the expenditure is kind of redended in that sense.
Okay.
So all our plans and any expenditures or anything, projects that are related to the tree commission will go through that budgeting process that we already do.
Yeah.
Not that we have that.
That's all, yeah.
Will there be any reason to replace the language, to say who they would be accountable to? Are they still spending public funds?
They would be, yeah.
Our commissions make recommendations to council, who set the budget.
It's advisor in nature.
Yeah.
It is advisor in nature. In fact, in here, the-
Yeah, the first line says there's no legislative, no authority, with the very first line of the-
Okay, so I guess I'm confused, do they spend public money or do they not spend public money?
So the way our boards and commissions work is more or less, like, they have approved budgetary amount that we would say, okay, that group, the marketing committee has twenty thousand dollars, so we, as the council, approve the expenditure, then they spend that twenty thousand dollars.
Does a council member sit on the business commission?
On tree?
We haven't made up the membership yet. It may be a subcommittee of the currently established committee, based on how much we expect them to meet. It may be, we haven't got there yet.
I probably kind of recommend either a staff member or a council member sit on the commission anytime that there's public funds being divvied out, I think of that accountability that needs to be had.
Yeah, and just to clarify, it's not like we would give them a checkbook or credit card. They'd still, yeah, yeah, they would still have to go through the normal appropriations process and spend money through the staff. It's not like they spend money outside of our, the control of the staff and the administration.
I think that's what concerned me with it, was that the accountability was just being stricken, and I didn't see anything being added back in to say who they would be accountable to, I assume that the other subcommittees we have have accountabilities written in the jargon about what your responsibilities are. So, probably ultimately what makes me stand up here tonight, because seeing that stricken language, it just feels like a symptom of a bigger problem. Of course, you know I'm here for lots of council meetings and watch them online, but I can't attend in person, and there's lots of discussion, there's lots of things happening, obviously, but lots of discussions about accountability, who's responsible for who. Sometimes it just feels like a game of hot potato, and seeing this stricken language just made me say, it's one more, who is accountable for what? And I would say, I don't get to vote for your staff, I don't get to vote for the administrator, I don't get to vote for the other people on the subcommittees, I vote for you all, and voted for lots of you, and put my trust in you to make these decisions, and they're tough decisions, I get that. It's tough to stand up here and talk to you guys, it's responsibility both ways. And so, one more thing that was stricken of council's responsibility just made it go flood inside of me to say, it's a big discussion, lots of things, I've heard, engineer is responsible, subcommittee is responsible, the administrator is responsible, the zoning department is responsible, and it's like, who else is responsible? I vote you in, that's my only voice, is you all, and if I can't vote you all in, why are you even sitting at the table if you're not going to be making the decisions? So, that's a lot, I appreciate what you do, I appreciate the time, I would just, I just didn't like seeing one more authority going away. I don't know who then represents my voice. Whether we agree or disagree, I have voted you in, and I expect the decisions to be made, so thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Syper. One thing that I would like to see from her comments of, like, a flow chart of our committees, kind of like where it breaks it down of, like, what each committee is taking, is it responsible for, and then how it goes back up to council. I think that might help to address some of those concerns that she's brought forward, and for any new resident who would like to join a committee, that they can see kind of what their responsibility is as a committee member. All right, moving into reports. Again, I attended last Saturday, a week ago Saturday, the Pinewood Derby and helped to judge that for the third year, that was a lot of fun, there's a lot of talented youth- There's a lot of talented youth out there, um, with their cars, and so it's always neat to see how creative they can get. I also met with the Jonathan Alder Elementary School Principals, Union County Health Department, Plain City Public Library, Chief McKee with the Plain City Police Department, and our Chair Amy Doller for Safety Town, and starting to get some more, um, items for that plan for this coming, for this summer session. Um, also attended Mr. Stanford's Economic Development Strategic Session last week, um, and had really good conversation about what, uh, economic development in Plain City looks like into the future. Um, so I look forward to being part of that. Um, Ms. Sonnet is not here this evening, so Chief McKee?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. I would like to thank the Plain City Lions Club for the three hundred dollar donation to the police department. Uh, Lieutenant Jasko, Sergeant Taylor, and myself will be attending Police Executive Leadership College or Reprocher uh, this Thursday and Friday coming. Uh, Officer Ryan Flowers attended a week-long training course for first-line supervision. It was hosted by the Ohio Association of Police. And then lastly, the police department will be presenting their new behind-the-wheel training for drivers that have recently received a probationary license or temporary obstruction permit. Uh, this training will be here in this room this Saturday, February eighteenth, from ten a.m. to twelve p.m., and again Thursday, February twenty-third, from six p.m. to eight p.m. So, if you know any new drivers that, uh, would like to attend this class, we, we still have a couple of these. It's a, it's a training that we take a little bit further than what drivers that does. We teach them things that they don't teach in there, um, as, as we've done now for two or three years. And actually, we were the only, like, we found out we were the only one in the United States that offered this, and a couple of police departments reached out from other states and got our curriculum, and are now teaching the same thing at their police department, so. Anyhow, if you know anybody, please send them our way. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Lupton, Village Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a meeting uptown today with the contractor, um, for the uptown streetscape. Work's expected to start hopefully late March, maybe in April. Um, the Public Works crew completed all the brickwork in front of Lobjoy Plaza, saving us a significant amount of money in maintaining that concrete. Several employees were trained last week in payroll processing and purchase orders. Um, so we should have pretty good backup now. Maple Street Bridge Engineering RFPs were due today. We should have that contract awarded within the next few weeks. Um, we're beginning work on the regional two oh eight plan, so should be hearing about that soon.
Thank you, Ms. Lupton. Mr. Sins, Council President?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We have our planning meeting coming up next week at the end of the week, uh, and for the, uh, for our March work session, and that's all I have on that.
Thank you, Mr. Sins. Mr. Lafayette, Law Director?
No report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Marketing Communications, Mr. Sins?
Uh, we have a meeting coming up on Tuesday, our next meeting. Uh, not this Tuesday, the following Tuesday, the twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. Sins. DCA?
Um, we have no applications for this, so our next meeting will be March.
March. Thank you, Mr. Rockers. Planning and zoning. Virginia Homes will be informally presenting to Planning Commission this Wednesday at six-thirty. If anyone would like to attend to be a part of the discussion prior to preliminary submissions. Virginia Homes is a development on forty-two South of Alcott, mixed residential with commercial frontage along forty-two. So, that is this Wednesday, the fifteenth, at six-thirty p.m. in council chambers. Parks and Recreation Committee, Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, our next Parks and Rec meeting is Thursday. It was moved from tomorrow for guess what reason. Um, so that will be six-thirty Thursday. And we will have on the agenda the, the, the vision for Past Time Park. If anybody there is interested in hearing that discussion, we'll be meeting here. Um, I'm not sure we're going to be in this room or that room, but, you know, it's open to the public. We'll be discussing that vision thing for Past Time Park, and also, uh, the tree commission, which is, uh, on the agenda night for, for a first reading. And, um, so between now and the second reading, Parks Committee is going to get some discussion, get the way in on this tree commission idea, how it's supposed to be used, what its purpose is, who's going to be on it, why are we increasing the membership, you know, asking a bunch of questions about, you know. Uh, and I think it's a good thing, you know, looking forward to activating that commission, which has been on the books, I understand, for some time. So, thank you, Mayor. That's it for Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Personal finance?
We have a meeting on Wednesday, and you said plans on Wednesday here?
Yes, we'll be here.
So, we'll be in there.
Thank you, Mr. Terrace. Fire board?
We met, uh, Thursday the second, and unfortunately, I left my notes at home, so I'll have to give my report for that next meeting. I apologize.
Okay, no, that's okay. And design review board, Mr. Ullman?
We should be meeting next week, but I don't think we have any applications at all, do we?
No, that's part of our, well, that's-
All right. Thank you. No public hearings this evening, so moving into old business, second reading, ordinance one dash twenty-twenty-three, setting the cost for the certificate of registration fees and the construction permit fees for right-of-way programs.
Motion to approve ordinance zero-one twenty-twenty-three.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ullman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Robert?
Yes.
Second reading, resolution two dash twenty-twenty-three, authorizing the participation in the Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program for twenty-twenty-three.
Motion to approve resolution zero-two dash twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ullman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Robert?
Yes.
Second reading, resolution three dash twenty-twenty-three, amending the rental rates for facilities owned by the Village of Plain City.
Motion to approve resolution zero-three twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ullman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Robert?
Yes.
Second reading, resolution four dash twenty-twenty-three, establishing the Economic Development Committee.
Motion to approve resolution oh-four dash twenty-twenty-three.
I will second that one. Very excited about that.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ullman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Robert?
Yes.
And moving, excuse me, into old business, motion appointing Carrie Mc-
Uh, Mayor, could I ask a question here? Um, I think you have some, some really good nominees for, for this board and commission. I'm wondering if it might be a good idea for council to actually have a face-to-face with these, um, people that are going to be representing the village on a really important committee, you know, the, the Joint Water Commission, uh, so we can get a feel for their understanding of the responsibility, their understanding of the issues that they're going to be confronted with, uh, their understanding of who they owe a fiduciary duty to, uh, and those kinds of questions, just so that they can get off on the right foot. Now, I'm willing to postpone that conversation and go ahead and do the appointments, but for the sake of communication with the people that we're putting on the board and, and, and having that conversation with them, uh, I think maybe we could discuss that in a, in an executive session possibly, or something like that, just to kind of like interview and, and take care of that business, close that loop, if you will.
So, personally, I, I know Ms. McLaughlin and worked with her on the charter. I know Mr. Harryman very well. I think they're both great candidates. Um, I do think that having a conversation with them after this, I'm sure the staff will, I've been kind of running, uh, the point on the, from the six oh one nineteen from a council perspective. If you'd like to be a part of a conversation, we sit down and speak with them after this, I think that's very appropriate. Um, saying that, I think that they are wonderful candidates, and I'm fully in support of the nominees and of the candidates and pushing for her tonight.
Yeah, I certainly would, uh, Mr. Cherry. So, keep me informed on that. I think really, uh, every council member should, should want to get to know the stuff that I, I brought up as it applies to, to these nominees, uh, because it is, it is crucially important, what they're going to be doing, the work they need to do, and that water board is going to dictate what happens to water and sewer in the village. So, it's not small business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed, and, um, I, I feel very confident with the two candidates, or else I would not have put them on the agenda to be approved for this evening.
That's, that's, I'm, I'm sorry, that's, that's good that you are, and I need to be also. And I think every council member needs to be the same, because it's their responsibility as well as yours.
I will motion to appoint Carrie McLaughlin to serve on the Board of the Mid-Ohio Water and Sewer District.
Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ullman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Robert?
Yes.
Is there, excuse me, is there a motion to, or appointing Tyler?
So moved.
I'll second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Ullman?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Robert?
Yes.
And a motion appointing Shane Hoffman to serve on the Communications and Marketing Advisory Committee with a term beginning March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So, I have a question about this one. I thought he was already on the committee, so.
We did, we started with staggered terms.
Thank you. That's what I was, I was missing. It was like, I thought at first it was a mistake, but clearly it's not. All right. I will make a motion to have Shane Hoffman appointed to the committee.
Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ullman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Robert?
Yes.
And first reading ordinance two dash twenty-three, amending section one forty-five of the codified ordinances of the Village of Plain City Tree Commission. First reading, resolution five dash twenty-three, authorizing a free annexation agreement with Wilcox Investment Group. And there are no discussion items this evening, so do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn? Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.